Good morning. Welcome to the September 28th, 2020 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If I will stand, Commissioner Jim Aberwater will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Good morning, and please bow your heads in prayer with me today. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us and for this change of seasons. We thank you for all of the blessings, and particularly those who serve for us as our frontline defenders of this nation and in this health crisis. We ask that you give us guidance through this crisis and help to bring some unity to this nation so that we can find some common grounds. We give you thanks for all of these blessings, and we ask that you continue to watch over, guide us, and protect us. In your name we pray.
You may be seated. Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Here.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Here.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush. Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Becca Korn.
Thank you, Gail. This meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission is being conducted electronically pursuant to Governor Bill Lee's Executive Order Number 16. I would ask for a motion that conducting this meeting electronically is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus. We have a motion and a second. Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones. David Jones. Can't hear me. David, Jim Aberwater?
Yes.
Lee Bogle?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Mike, I'm sorry, Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This time we need to approve the minutes for our May 26 meeting. I'll call on our vice chair, Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I have read through those minutes. I have gone through those, and I think we have, well, I thought we had two sets, but yes, we just have the one set. So I have read through those. I didn't find anything, and Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve our May 26 meeting minutes. Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gail. We have no items withdrawn or deferred from our agenda, which means we have 18 agenda items today, so hang on to something. We're going to move quick. Item 6A, this is submitted for preliminary plan approval, 6A1. The item number is 201010. Rooker Landing, Section 4, 64 lots on 50.63 acres, zoned PUD, located along Rooker Road. M.H. Way is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good morning, Commissioners and those watching at home and here at the meeting as well. This first item, as you stated, is for Rooker Landing, Section 4. The Rooker Landing Plan Development was originally approved by the Board of Commissioners back in June of 2018. Preliminary plan for that development was approved by the Planning Commission later that year in September. A revised plan for Sections 1 and 2 was approved earlier this year back in February by the Planning Commission. Due to the presence of wetland soils on the property, the applicant submitted an amendment to their plan developments, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners just in August of this year, August 13. This is the preliminary plan for those remaining lots, and it is consistent with the approved pattern book. Staff did have several comments on this. Looking at our comment list, those comments have been addressed. This plan appears to be in good order, so with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hi, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Is this one going to give teeth to that red light?
Oh, that red light's already on its way. Yes, sir. That's in conjunction with the Davenport Station. This one, we have, they are working on the Rooker Road side of it, the turn lane improvements, which are in conjunction with the traffic signal. So TDOT has approved the traffic signal. They have, I believe they posted a surety, so we are going to be working with them and getting that TDOT, that traffic signal installed shortly.
The left turn back toward school?
Yes.
Coming out of Rooker, left turn back toward school?
Yes, sir. They're putting a dedicated right and left and through on Rooker Road, so it is in conjunction with the Davenport Station where they're coming out and tying into this. It'll be a four-way intersection. Right now, it's a three-way, but it'll be a four-way with the new Burnley Way Road or something like the Burnley Road coming into it.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 20-1010, Rooker Landing, Section 4. Any other questions or comments? Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B, these are items submitted for final plat approval, and we have 14 of these items. Item 6B1, 18-2090, Richmond's Retreat, Section 4, and this is a reapproval, 19 lots on 6.06 acres, zoned RM. This is with a previously approved planned unit development. KW Group is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The final plat for this section was originally approved by the Planning Commission back in August of 2018. Of course, final plat's approval, as you know, are valid for 12 months, so this is outside of its 12-month window, so they're bringing it back for reapproval. Most of our comments have been addressed. There were a couple tweaks that needed to be made to the plat, but those have been made. The version that you're looking at on the screen is the final version and is in pretty good order. I believe Mike wanted to make just a couple comments on this, but from our comment standpoint, it appears to be in good shape.
Okay. Let me get to that map. Richmond's Retreat Boulevard is an existing entrance out to Sheville Highway, and what we're working with the developer on modifying the curb cut and also putting in a turn lane, and I think we're about settled on all the improvements. You can see this is Rooker, excuse me, Richmond's Retreat Boulevard. It comes out. It doesn't quite line up with this median cut, so what we're going to do is they're going to open up this wider here and then close this up a little bit here, stripe this, and then this driveway across the street will still have access, but this'll make it a much easier way to turn left. If you're coming north on 231, you'll be able to turn left into here, and also likewise, you don't have to go for a short distance, make a hairpin turn, and go back out. You can go straight across to go left to go north out of Richmond's Retreat. So that's just a little update. That will be corrected with this section as well.
Well, they have to construct a northbound left turn lane as well. Would that be part of the?
Yes, in the, yes, northbound left turn lane going into Richmond's Retreat. Yes, that's part of it. I'm sorry if I failed to mention that. But all in all, the plat was in good order, and we're about through working with TDOT on getting this all squared away.
Thank you, Lee. We have a motion and a second to approve item number 20- I'm sorry, 18-2090. This is for Richmond's Retreat, Section 4, a reapproval. Any other questions or comments? Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gail. 6B2, the item number is 20-2074, NISCE's Way, three lots on 6.85 acres, zoned RM, located along East Main Street. Bradley Smotherman is the applicant. This includes a waiver request to allow the creation of a lot that is less than five acres, and this is off of a private easement. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along East Main Street, just to the east of the Murfreesboro city limits. Lot 3 contains an existing house and some accessory structures. This lot and Lot 2 will both have road frontage along East Main Street. However, the remaining Lot 1, as you can see on the plat, either on your iPads or on the screen, will rely on an access easement through Lot 1. Lot 1 is less than five acres in size, as was stated earlier, which is our requirement for property along a private easement, but other than that, the plat itself is in good order. Everything, our comments have been addressed from that standpoint, but if this is approved with the waiver, then that'll be the last comment that we really had, that a waiver would be needed for that. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do each lot have adequate soil for what they need?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's no off-site easements or anything. There's soil on each one.
Mike, we've seen some of these tracks.
I'm afraid it'll kick off as you're on the extension.
We've seen some of these tracks in this area that have some drainage issues in the past, and I'm just curious about this particular lot. I see a big drainage easement in the back, but have you reviewed all of the other drainage on the lot?
Yes, we have looked at the drainage for this. There is a big drainage easement that rolls through here farther to the north that kind of comes from the east side and flows, kind of hooks and turns, goes through these trees here, and let me get back to the plat, and I'll show you. What we said, that if you build up here, it's high and dry. These are the soils areas for the two new lots, and this is the soil for the existing house down here, Lot 3. So we said, if you build north of this drainage easement, one, you're going to have to have an engineered driveway planned for a large driveway pipe that goes through there, and then also you're going to need a septic system pump to get it from your house on this side back up and over to the soils area on this side. So I believe that is note 10? Yeah. If structures are built anywhere north of the soils area, minimum pad elevations is determined by a registered Tennessee land surveyor, and culvert size to be determined by a registered Tennessee engineer may be required. So if they build north of the soils areas, they've got to elevate, you know, look at the elevations for drainage, and then also get a driveway culvert across that big drainage pathway.
These lots are relatively narrow, and by the time you do the 10-foot setback on each side, drainage is going to, is, is this house that's in the front on the street, is it going to need to have a way to drain towards the rear, or can that drain towards the street?
It'll just drain naturally to the north, to that drainage easement through the middle of the lots 1 and 2. They'll all just drain to this drainage easement in the back.
Just have to have a swell between?
Yes.
Between the two lots or something? Will it be able to cut a swell through that soils area?
The two new, well, I would say they would probably, if they built, what we've been told by the surveyor, that the houses will go right here on the south side of the soils so they can gravity flow to the septic system right here in these hatched areas. So these are both 90, that's 90 feet wide, and I don't see a dimension, oh, that's a, it's, they're most likely 90 feet each there. It doesn't have a dimension across here because this is the front line, lot line of Lot 2, and it's saying it's 137 feet. So they look like they're pretty wide lots. They're just long, long, and skinny compared to the rest of the lot. So yes, we feel that that was adequate room to build a house here and a house on each side here, and then just have the drainage go to the north to the drainage swell in the middle of these two new lots.
If you are comfortable with that?
Yes, sir, I am.
With it, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 20-2074, NISCE's Way. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, do I need to make, amend that motion to be subject to staff comments?
So noted. Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B3, 20-2075, Cascade Falls, Section 7, 23 lots on 15 and 1/2 acres, zoned RM, located off J.D. Todd Road. RHB is the applicant. This includes a fire hydrant waiver request. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plat for this subdivision section we're looking at was approved at the Planning Commission's July 10, 2020 meeting. This plat does appear to be consistent with the preliminary plat approval that was had. The houses in this section, as was stated just a moment ago, will require residential sprinkler systems like the other sections of this development. They've all been like this throughout time, so this particular requirement with the fire hydrant waiver and the sprinklers is not unusual for this particular subdivision. Most of staff's comments on this have been addressed. There is an outstanding issue with some improvements on one of the existing lots. Lot 224 has a retaining wall that's actually built onto the subject property where proposed Lot 226 is going to be. We've alerted the design team to this. This item will need to be addressed prior to recording the plat because it extends several feet, as I recall, onto adjacent property.
Across the property line and into a drainage easement.
Correct. So that'll need to be addressed prior to allowing the plat to be recorded, but as far as moving this forward for approval, we, staff was okay with that. But again, the applicant and the design team have been made aware of that, but with that, I think Mike has some comments as well.
Right, and then this one, you know, most places in Rutherford County, they're relatively flat. This one is not. So you can see, you have some large lots on this side, and then around this cul-de-sac, there's some pretty good-sized lots, and then Lot 226, which Doug had mentioned with the retaining wall over here. If I can pull up the construction plans for this, these were designed to be pad-ready lots, and the majority, I'd say 99% of the lots in Cascade Falls are slab homes, and these are designed to be pad-ready for the slabs. So the design engineer has designed pads for each one of these lots. Unfortunately, some of these lots are extremely steep, and in doing so, we've got a quandary. Our regulations say, you know, anything steeper than 15%, you've got to have a critical lot grading plan. So one of our comments was, you know, you've got a lot of steep cut on these long lots on the east side over here, and then you've got some fill where these lots were brought up to be pad-ready around the cul-de-sac, and then likewise, the road coming in, these were all pad-ready. But the entire lot is not pad-ready. But if we go back to the final plat, it shows that you can build, based on our standard setbacks, you can build anywhere on the lot. But my issue is, well, our rules say if it's steeper than 15% going away from the road, you've got to have a critical lot grading plan. And we gave them an option, said, hey, trim these out to where you're going to build the house on this lot, and then just exclude those steep areas, or call it a critical lot grading plan will be required for each lot in this subdivision, most every lot in here. So that's fine, but that's going to cost the builder several hundred dollars to hire an engineer to come up with a grading plan for this individual lot grading plan for each lot. And I can hear the gnashing of teeth and the cries right now, but if, you know, it meets our requirements, you know, the setbacks meet our requirements, and the note that they've added that the lots with this, this cross will be required a critical lot grading plan. I'm just letting you know that it's going to be an issue when building permits are going to be pulled. They're going to come to Tanya to say, hey, let's, I'm ready to pull a building permit on 243, and then Tanya's going to pull the plat out and look at this little symbol and says, no, it needs a critical lot grading plan. You need to hire you an engineer to do that. So either leave it like it is or trim the setbacks out to the pad area, which was on the approved construction plans. So I'm just putting it out there that it's.
We're going to hear some issues on that one.
Mike, if they do have a problem with that, is there an avenue to BZA to get approval or waiver for that, or?
Well, I don't necessarily think it's an issue with the BZA. I think what Mike is saying is that if they choose not to trim the setbacks so that all the steep areas are outside of the building setback area, that they'll just have to submit the critical lot grading plan before we'll issue a building permit. It's nothing they would need to get relief from from the BZA. It's just something we look at it, or, you know, engineering primarily looks at it and says, yes, this will work, no, it won't. Once they say it'll work, they can go ahead and issue the building permit. There's nothing to grant relief from at that point.
No, it wouldn't have to come back.
No, we don't need to come back to y'all. It's just that they'll have to hire an engineer to position the house on the lot, show the proposed grades, existing grades, and, you know, have to pay in the hundreds, maybe even more, for each lot to have this design done. You know, to me, it would be simpler just to trim out where you're showing the houses are going on as that would match the approved construction plans, the grading plans. So I'm just leaving it out there. I know we're going to hear some issues on this one. Why do I have to pay for this? Why do I have to do this? Well?
Mike, I'm going to agree with you 100% on this, speaking from experience. I think the engineers need to work to protect the developer on this. What you can get in certain situations, if they sell that lot to an individual that doesn't understand how these things work, a lot of misunderstandings can happen in finger pointing because they can't understand why they can't build way back on the back of that lot. And perhaps they can, but it's certainly a much more complicated situation. And the engineer with just a few computer strokes can mark off the building pad area up front or on the proper place of the lot and completely protect the developer on that.
So like I'm saying, it meets our requirements, but I know Tanya's going to hear a lot of complaints. I'm going to hear a lot of complaints, and I'm just letting y'all know that there's a solution to that, but that this does meet our requirements.
Well, this is a final plat approval.
Yes.
Not a preliminary plat. I tend to like to take care of all the issues that may or may not come up before we approve the final plat.
And Mike, you said that there was a solution. What would be the solution to this?
Just trim out the.
Is to have those presented up front?
Just trim out the areas where you showed us where you were going to build on the construction plans. Let me pull that back up again. So they've designed each lot to be pad-ready. That means they're just going to hand it over to the builder and said, boom, it's ready, start building your slab home, and, but what I'm saying is, these areas, the dark area here where it's three-to-one slopes, and then the existing grade where it's even steeper in the back, because of our rules, anything on a lot that has excessive slopes, steep slopes, steeper than 15% going away from the road, we require a critical lot grading plan. And I'm just saying, it'd be easier just to trim them out and just show us where you're going to build the house on the final plat, so it's not an issue when building permits are pulled.
Can I address?
Yes.
So I think that, a couple of things. Our developer and the builder are basically the same. I think that he is building, if not all, most of the homes inside this subdivision, so he, and he's completely aware of the situation. Tell me if I'm wrong about this, if after we sell the house, if we're to do your option, Mike, and trim the setback lines, if we were to sell the house and they wanted to come back and add a detached garage or a shed, would we not have to come back and do a resubplat later on to move the setback? If you wanted to build it?
Okay, so if Lot 227 wanted to put a detached garage down here.
Right.
It would have to meet two things. It would have to, like you said, the setback requirements, and then also elevation requirements.
Right.
So that, those are steep slopes. Those are designed at three-to-one slopes back here, so.
Yeah, but it's a deep lot, and so if you wanted to put a shed or anything in the backyard, which I could see a homeowner wanting to do in the future, we would have, I mean, don't you have to be inside the setback for that?
Well, detached structures work a little differently than attached. Detached structures can be as close as five feet to the side or rear property lines. So a lot of setbacks, building envelopes that we would see even on lots that aren't encumbered by steep slopes or anything, can have accessory structures, detached ones that are outside of the building envelope because they don't follow the same setbacks as the principal structures do. So would you have to replat that? I don't think you'd have to replat it, but I agree with Mike. I think, you know, with the items he was talking about as far as the grading and all that would have to be done.
We understand the grading, but I think this leaves the most, leaving it the way we have it, leaves the most flexibility and for not only our client now, but the future homeowner, and if our client is fully aware of it, it seems like it's, especially if he's the builder and the developer, it should not be an issue if it complies with the regulations, and he's fully aware. We have to do an as-built for everything anyway, right, Mike?
Yes.
And so we're going to have all the grades there. We're going to know where we can put the house, you know, before you can get a building permit, and so if he wants to expand past that limits, then he has made a very conscious decision to do that, and so I think that, and.
So like I said, I'm fine with it, but I can, I can hear the complaints and now, why do I got to do that? Why, okay, no, that's fine. We'll leave it like it is. I'll concede.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Allen. I've got a question for Mike.
Yes, Rhonda.
Mike, is there any way to sort of do the both and of what you're suggesting? What I'm assuming is, is as a developer, you want as large a building envelope as possible to make your lot look more appealing to a buyer, and so I'm curious, knows there's some way to do the shaded area like you're talking about? Draw the building envelope in, but then add a note that says, with a revised approved critical lot grading plan, the building envelope may be expanded. That way, that still gives them their ability to say, this is buildable, but not, you know, there's another step that has to happen. Would that be something that would be a good compromise?
So having like a two designate non-critical lot area? lot area and a critical lot area, is that what you're saying?
Perhaps, yeah.
Maybe even a note on the plat that just says, depending on where the houses look, kind of like we did on the Nisi's Way, depending on where it's located on the lot. Yeah, we could be all right with that. Yeah, that might work.
I don't know how to word that into a motion, but if you can help me with that language, I'm happy to make that motion.
Yes, that'd be fine with me.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. That would be included in staff comments.
Right. And I think we, the way that Ms. Allen was talking about, we could word a note, something to the effect of, for those lots, you know, whatever ones they end up being, the ones that are currently marked on there, we could just say, depending on house location on these particular lots that are marked, a critical lot grading plan may be required, just depending on building location. We can work with the engineer to figure out some good wording on that.
Everyone understand those staff comments?
So, does that mean that they do not have to submit critical lot plans if they revise this plat with a building area, or they can just proceed without?
Yes. They're going to have to show us something, where the house is going on there. So-
So, if they designate building pads on the plat, then in the future, if they wanted to go beyond that building pad, then all they would have to do is submit a critical grading plan.
Yes, sir. Right.
So, that would eliminate the need for a critical plan up front.
Yes, sir. I'd be happy with that. Yes, sir.
Everyone understand, we have a motion and a second to approve 20-2075 Cascade Falls, Section 7, with staff comments and some additional comments. Other questions? Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion. Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gail. Item 6B4, item number is 20-2077, The Estates of One Mile Lane, five lots on 9.8 acres, zoned RM, located along One Mile Lane. Scott Young is the applicant. Let me make a comment here real quick. We have Ms. Karen Nolan that's attending this meeting via Zoom and has a couple of questions. After the presentation by our staff, if she still has those questions, I'll ask for a suspension of the rules to allow her to speak. I think her questions are drainage issues. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the subject property into five residential lots. All of the lots on the, as you can see on the plat, are going to have road frontage, but not everyone is going to have its own driveway. As you can see, Lot 2 is going to be accessed through an access easement through Lot 1, in order to not disturb the stream buffer. Lot 3 will also be accessed through an easement through Lot 5, and that's the one going back to Wilmore Court, I believe. Lot 5 does contain an existing house. That will have to be readdressed, because the existing driveway is going to be removed, at least back to the soil area for the new lot toward the front. And that house there will no longer have access to One Mile Lane. It will have to come off of Wilmore Court. So, that will have to be a readdressing situation. When these comments were written, we were still reviewing the changes. The changes that were made, at least from a zoning standpoint, are, seem to be better than the original that came in. Most of the comments have been addressed. As Mr. Phillips, as you stated at the beginning, there are still some drainage concerns with this. Ms. Nolan, I believe, is getting ready, wants to speak, and Mike may have some additional comments on this. But one of the changes they did make was the access easement for, was that one and two? Was that lots one and two?
Yeah, for lots one and two. Originally, the access was on the other side, but that was going to get right into the middle of that stream buffer and had the potential to disturb that. So, they switched that to the western side of the property. So, we're better with that than we were the original. But there's a lot of drainage issues on this property, again, just from the standpoint of making sure that everything is cool, not going to mess with any of the drainage concerns. But I'll let Mike speak more to that. And again, Ms. Nolan, I believe, has some comments. So, with that, Mike, I'll turn it over to you. Okay. There is a large stream that runs through the middle of the development, and we have shown the stream buffers on either side. It crosses One Mile Lane in the, I guess, southeast corner, and kind of snakes its way to the northwest side of it. Lots 1, 2, and, what is this, one here, 4, will be accessed off of One Mile Lane. Lot 4 was the existing driveway, will most likely be utilized to the new house that'll go in this location here, if you can see my cursor. Lots 1 and 2 will access this far edge of One Mile Lane. And 1, you can be at this location, 2, back here. They will not need to cross this large drainage way that runs through the middle of this unnamed tributary. Now, lots 3 and 5, Lot 5 being the existing house, will come off of Wilmore Lane. So, looking at, and I did talk to Ms. Nolan last week, she's concerned about the drainage. And let me get that pulled up real quick. There's One Mile. It's kind of turned 90 degrees north is to the right. So, you've got the existing driveway goes back to the existing house here, and then you'll have a new driveway on this far end over here for the two lots on this side of the stream. These two lots will access Wilmore Court. And like Doug said, this existing house will need to be readdressed, because it'll be coming off of Wilmore Court. Let's get to that on this map. I've got too many maps, I think. Now, Ms. Nolan is concerned about drainage. They live, I believe, if my map will catch up, this property here, and let me turn on the address points. I think it's 516 Wilmore Court. And the old existing house, right now, has this address 259, but that's One Mile Lane here. So, she's concerned about drainage, and I'll let her speak on that. But we talked about the drainage for this subdivision, and then also her subdivision. And if I can show you the contour elevations, there is a little bit of a ridge, you can kind of see right through here. These houses on Wilmore Court, the existing house is part of that ridge, and it continues on this way. So, a drop of water that falls on this side will go to this unnamed tributary in the middle of this proposed plat. A drop of water that falls on this side will go towards Wilmore Court. So, this existing house and maybe a little bit of this new house over here, I'd say most of it's going to drain back towards this existing tributary of Stewart's Creek. So, she's concerned, and I don't want to steal her thunder, about drainage through her side yard and her backyard. And I do have some of those photographs, I believe. Oops, not that.
Mike, is this blue line or just wet weather stream?
It is a blue line stream. It is a, and I can turn on my stream layer. This is linked to TDEX Stream Maps. And you can see this blue line here. This is an unnamed tributary to Stewart's Creek. Stewart's Creek is actually right back here, in this area over here. So, this kind of flows and connects with Stewart Creek, which wraps around Wilmore Court there. So, Ms. Nolan, I pulled up the first set of a couple of pictures, if you want to go ahead and speak.
Yes, first, thank you very much for letting us join in. I know this is not a-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
Just hold on, if you would. Mike, before we, before we get into any comments-
Forgive me, forgive me.
Have, has staff, has staff looked at the drainage and-
Yes.
Is satisfied with the plan?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We determined that the new houses will be on the opposite side of that ridge. They will be required to have minimum pads, minimum floors. Some are in the FEMA flood zone, so they'll have to have FEMA elevation certificates along with construction. So, but she wanted to speak about that, but you have to suspend the rules to let her do that. I'm sorry.
Understand. I just wanted to make sure that staff had a recommendation and was satisfied with that.
Yes.
Ms. Nolan, I see you on the screen. I'll ask for a suspension of the rules to allow Ms. Karen Nolan to address the commission. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. I'm just going to say, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? The motion carries. Ms. Nolan, you're up.
Again, thank you very much for letting us join. I had sent Mike some pictures of the current situation that we're having, and that's what I wanted to hear out of this meeting here. He did, I'm pretty sure, mention that possibly Lot 3 would drain back over into Wilmore Court. If that is the situation, that is the great concern that we have. Mike, can you share those pictures to show the current drainage that is happening today, without any more houses draining into our lot?
Yes, they are on the screen now.
Okay. So, you can see what Mike's got right there. I can't change the pictures, but that's our backyard. He did have one just a minute ago that showed the easement that comes from the opposite side of Wilmore Court, which is this new land that they're planning to develop. If there's any more, Mike, can you get to the one where it shows the easement, where it's showing the water coming from the side of our house?
Yes.
That is our concern. And if there's one more house that comes with water, we were going to be devastated. So, there's part of the, there's the easement that's across the road. So, what you're seeing, that's Wilmore Court right there. Directly over across the street is the new development. So, this water drains down the side of our house, and then empties into the back of our house.
And that's what I talked to Ms. Nolan about. Let me get back to my GIS map. So, bear with me just a second while I, my slow computer pops up. This was a, I believe, a 1980 subdivision, and there, it's kind of hiding from me. Okay. So, she, the Nolans are on Lot 40, if I can see my cursor. Lot 40, my cursor's disappeared on me. And there's a drainage easement that runs beside her house and her neighbors, and runs to the back, towards the, I guess, north is straight up on this plat, or mostly straight up on this plat. So, it runs to the east. So, what I discussed with Ms. Nolan, if I can find my cursor again, there, it kind of disappears on me. So, what's happening, it drains between these two lots, and then you can see the separation between these contours. That's two foot of fall from there to there. So, that's extremely flat. It flattens out to, I calculated, it was like 0.4%, 0.2%. So, it's extremely flat across that property. And what happens over time, vegetation builds up, leaf litter, all that, and that compounds an already flat topography. So, I've asked Ms. Nolan to reach out to our Public Works Division. We have a Public Works engineer that works with the Highway Department that can possibly investigate this, and we work with them as well. So, this side of the ridge for the Estates of One Mile drains towards Wilmore Court, through her lot, back across the lot, and then to Stewart's Creek, here on the kind of northeast corner there. So, you know, we can, we can try to investigate what's going on in her backyard, but I strongly believe that the new lot is going to be going the other side, on the other side of this little ridge here, draining back towards this unnamed tributary, running through the middle of the lot. So, we can work with her on that. Look at the drainage culvert underneath Wilmore Court, and then also what's happening across this backyard here. But we, like I told Ms. Nolan, we have to get all the neighbors in agreement. So, if the Highway Department, the Public Works Division says, yes, we think we can do something, we need to get all the neighbors on board, which essentially allow them to do a drainage easement through here to maybe dig a swell or something across here. But we have to be careful of, you know, septic systems, sheds or anything that are in the way. So, that's, that's what we're going to look at on her side of the ridge. But we can, we can definitely look at what's going on with the new lot. What lot was that? Lot 3, I think. We can make sure that it is, it drains back towards the unnamed tributary through the middle of this lot.
Mike, would it be appropriate to designate that Lot 3 as a critical lot grading plan?
We could do that. Yes, we could. Yes. Oh, yeah. That would work.
I think we could do that and just make sure the swales are in place and make sure it goes back to the creek.
Yes.
Is the, is the engineering department here, someone here? I think it's Huddleston Steel, if I'm not mistaken. Is someone here that could answer some questions or take some questions online?
Mike, question on this, on this blue line stream on the other side. They are not going to cross that stream in any way whatsoever?
No, sir. No, sir.
Not legally, anyway?
No, sir. And if they would, you know, they would have to have, and I'll show you, I'm sorry, flipping back and forth, but they would have pretty significant driveway culverts, would have to match what's under One Mile. Let me turn this around. There's, I don't have the sizes, but those are pretty significant culverts. I'd say they were probably 60-inch equivalents. So, you know, they, if you wanted to cross that stream, you could do it, but you'd have to get an ARAP permit. You'd have to get an engineer design showing that culvert size accordingly.
Well, the other thing that I would say is, we certainly don't want any oops 10 years from now, when this, when it gets one of those six-inch rains overnight.
Yes, sir. Right. And that's why they are required, I think I've, yes, they've got minimum pad, minimum floors on all of these, and even the existing house. So, if the existing house has work done on it that will exceed 50% of its value- So if the existing house has work done on it that will exceed 50% of its value, it needs to be brought up to current flood standards. I believe, I would have to check that, I'm not sure if that's in the FEMA flood zone totally or not. I think being on that ridge might have helped it out. Sorry, I'm jumping around from map to map. So there's the existing house here. And let me turn on the FEMA flood maps. I was thinking it was in the 500-year. Yes. The orangish, brownish-orange is the 500-year. Well, we don't call it 500-year anymore. It's the .2% chance of rain, flood elevations. So we have to regulate to the blue areas, and any work done, if this house were sitting in this blue area and it needed, you know, 51% of its value, work done on it, whether they're going to expand it, they're going to renovate it or something like that, that whole house would need to be brought up to current flood standards. But being that it's in the 500-year flood zone, it won't be a requirement, it will just have to meet the local drainage requirements that they've established on the plat.
Mike?
Yes.
This is Karen Nolan again. Do you all have record? There is a bridge that goes over 1 Mile Lane that, I think that's Stewart's Creek, which is part of this whole drainage issue. It floods periodically, and they have to close the road. So again, this is going back to my concern on the drainage issues that are happening in this area. I'm pretty sure you all are probably aware of that because that road gets closed periodically, maybe once a year, that they can't get through, they have to block it off. But again, I would just appreciate somebody looking at the back of our yard, that happens. I know Mike has those pictures. I know you said you will deem Lot 3 as a critical, but I think that there are a lot of contributaries around this, that there are issues. This road, 1 Mile Lane, gets closed probably once a year for that creek coming up over the bridge.
Yes, yes. And we do work with the Highway Department. They have to close several roads in the county, and they, you know, look at each bridge in, as needed. They do have a bridge fund where they're updating bridges in the county, but I would have to talk to the Highway Department about this particular, this particular one. So, but yes, we are, we are careful. We ask them to look at any drainage in the area that might impact not only the new houses, but existing houses like yours in the county. So, but yes, I'll reach out to the Highway Department and ask them about that.
Mike, will you bring up that 2% flood map again and show the entire property?
Yes. It's the .2%. It's the inverse of 500. Yes. That's a statistical chance that floodwaters can rise to a certain elevation, and the blue area used to be called the 100-year storm event. But people would think, well, we had a bad storm 10 years ago, we're not going to have another one for another 90 years on average. So they've changed the name to the 1% chance. Every year, there's a 1% chance that floodwaters can rise to this elevation.
You have to take that into consideration for building or zoning, or if, I mean, if you look at that map...
Yes, yes.
Lot 1 and Lot 2...
Right.
Part of Lot 3 is...
Yes. They are in the FEMA flood zone, so they will have to be built, the ground that they're built on will have to be elevated one foot above the FEMA base flood elevation, and then the finished floor, two more feet above that. So it's a total of three feet above the flood elevation. And so we also, we also require that they have, during the construction, it's checked three times, the foundation, framing, and then the final stage, to ensure that it's brought up. But I couldn't remember, the 500-year, we don't regulate to the 500, just the 100-year
Mike, is there any way, in your opinion, that we tweak just a little bit to take more water to the stream, the blue line, and maybe a little detention, retention on one of those other lots?
These are, these are large lots, and like I said, it's not draining back towards them. The only, I strongly believe the only part of the new lot, what was that? I doubt very seriously, but we can verify with a critical lot grading plan that they will not see any new water that they haven't seen already. So everything on, you know, the west side of that ridge is going to be draining towards that unnamed tributary stream, so...
The remainder of those issues are really outside of this plat?
Yes, yes. And like I said, we've...
Nation needs to happen between Highway Department.
Yes. We're going to have the Highway Department investigate what's going on with the Nolan's backyard and the neighbors' backyard and see if there's some kind of blockage, is there a way to make improvements with the drainage in the area? Let me turn off some of these layers because it gets kind of quirky. So we're going to have our Public Works engineer go out and investigate and say, is there something blocking the flow? Is there an old fence row where the trees have mounted up and blocking the flow where water can't get out of here anymore? Is there an opportunity to cut a swell through here to kind of drain this flat area? Like I said, from here to here is two feet of fall, and it was extremely flat. It was less than half percent. It was a .4%, .3% across here. Right.
Nation or anything to raise that elevation?
Right. So we're also looking in ways to investigate to allow this to drain out, to drain towards Stewart's Creek a little better, and see if we can make improvements that way.
In your opinion, how far back is Public Works backed up?
They are extremely busy with the, working on the Tan Oaks Road Improvement Sledge, Miller Plainview Road. So they are working outside of that, but they're extremely slammed with all that work around the new school sites in Christiana Plainview Sledge.
Does this lady, will you carry this forward to them in behalf of them so that they don't have to make a bunch more meetings, or you'll be, you'll take care of that?
Yes, sir. Fortunately, we have, the Public Works engineer works for the Highway Department, but his office is in my building, so I have his ear anytime I need it. So, yes, sir.
Mike, let me make a, I don't know, a comment of some sort. I think Ms. Nolan's concerns and maybe some other neighbors' concerns is that this development is going to worsen their situation. And just looking at those pictures, I feel for your situation as it is. Every time it rained, I'd start sweating, and I think you guys probably do that as well. And let me tell you that this commission has developed a real feel for flooding in the area. What you're saying is that the applicant has addressed those concerns, and those concerns should be, during the building process, should not affect them in a more negative way.
Yes, sir.
If, and I'm assuming that the staff's recommendation is to approve, let me just make a suggestion. If this commission wants to approve, I would suggest a comment, since Huddleston Steel is not available to address some of our concerns, that the approval is contingent upon Huddleston Steel, the applicant, and their engineers meet with these neighbors and explain exactly what they're doing to retain that water or to make that water go in a direction that won't negatively affect those. It's my suggestion if we do move to approve.
As I don't have to reach...
Ms. Nolan, I appreciate you coming on and making comments. Is there anything else that you wanted to address today?
Oh, and I appreciate you all's time. So is Huddleston Steel the contractor?
They are the design engineer and surveyor.
Huddleston Steel put the design together, and they are the engineering firm that put the design together. The applicant, of course, is Mr. Scott Young.
And actually, they designed your subdivision as well, so...
Well, that's good to know. I do want to make one more comment. The pictures that I sent to Mike, there's two different dates. There was a February 6th of 2019, and there was a February 20th of 2019 that I've actually documented. So twice in one month, our backyard has flooded. So again, I know you've heard this, and I appreciate it, but it is a great concern that there is any more water that comes in, we will be in dire trouble.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chen, this is Commissioner Allen. Other comment?
Yes, Rhonda.
Ms. Nolan actually just answered my next question, which was, when were these pictures taken? I was trying to determine that. As you were showing those pictures, Mike, to me, that's an alarming amount of water. So when you talk about one more drop falling one direction or another, one more drop, it feels like it could, it could impact these folks pretty significantly. Personally, I would prefer that we defer final approval on this until Public Works engineer can evaluate the situation because, as Marvin mentioned earlier, an oops on this is going to put these people underwater. So do we have any idea how quickly we could get somebody from Public Works to evaluate that situation so we could perhaps see this at our next meeting?
I do not know. I would have to reach out to them and discuss that with them. But like I said, this, Ms. Nolan and the Nolan property and the neighbors are on the other side of that ridge. So I mean, it's the dividing line, and we've added a note saying that the lot accessing Wilmore Court, I think it was Lot 3, will be a critical lot grading plan to make sure no more water will go that way. But yes, if y'all feel strongly that we need to defer, I mean, that's, we can definitely check with Public Works on that.
Personally, I do feel strongly about it because our greatest responsibility, really in all plans that we evaluate, is drainage. That's the one thing that impacts neighbors really more than anything. And so personally, I would prefer that we defer this at least to the next two weeks' meeting until we can have somebody from Public Works evaluate that. If the commission feels differently, then I appreciate that, but I will not be voting to support this.
I think it would give the design engineer a chance to address some of that as well and in this forum.
Did I hear a motion?
Yes, that was a motion to defer.
Okay. Subject to what?
Subject to the Public Works engineer having an opportunity to evaluate the drainage situation in that area.
Very good. Everyone understand the motion? Need a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer item 20-2077, the estates of 1 Mile Lane. Other questions or comments? Ms. Nolan, do you understand what we're doing?
Yes, sir, and thank you very much, and I appreciate it, Commissioner Allen, so greatly.
Very good. Other questions or comments? The motion is to defer. Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion...
Yes.
Craig Lynch...
David Jones...
Yes.
Jim Aberwater...
Yes.
Lee Bogle...
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth...
Yes.
Pettis Reed...
Yes.
Rhonda Allen...
Yes.
Jeff Phillips...
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to defer carries. Thank you. Item 6B5, burnt knob self-storage, the item number is 20-2078, one lot on 11.1 acres, zoned LI located along burnt knob roads. Stuart Conway is the applicant. This includes a waiver for an unbuildable lot. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you recall, a site plan for this property was approved by the Planning Commission back last month, the August 24th meeting. The property contains two tracks, so they will need to be combined so the proposed buildings won't violate any building setbacks. The lot does not have any usable septic soils, and there's not a fire hydrant located within 1,000 feet, so they have asked for a waiver for the unbuildable lot. Now, I will say that that's unbuildable as far as residential uses are concerned. Commercial uses could still be established here as long as they met the fire code, and that's a discussion that the applicant would have to have with the fire chief, which I believe has already been done. The applicant's site plan, again, does not show any bathrooms or occupied space for that mini warehouse-type development. But as far as our comments are concerned, really the only outstanding comment that we have at this point is just verifying that the TDEC certification will not be required as there's no soil on here. I don't expect it to be. They just didn't get confirmation from that, but that can be done prior to the plat being recorded. So with that, the comments have been addressed, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug. Questions for staff?
Motion for a second?
We have a motion and a second to approve item 20-2078, burnt knob self-storage. Other questions? Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion... Chip Pinion... Craig Lynch... David Jones...
Yes.
Jim Aberwater...
Yes.
Lee Bogle...
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth...
Yes.
Pettis Reed...
Yes.
Rhonda Allen...
Yes.
Chip Pinion...
Yes.
Jeff Phillips...
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B6, 20-2079, Blue Water Quarry, one lot on .75 acres, zoned RM, located along Twin Oak Drive. Robert Alley is the applicant. This includes a waiver for an unbuildable lot. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is sort of similar to the last one as far as an unbuildable lot is concerned, but the applicant's proposing to sell a portion of this property to the Blue Water Quarry, which is located directly across the street of Twin Oak Drive. The primary purpose for this is for stormwater drainage. The lot does not have any, I'm sorry, not contain any septic soils, so it technically is an unbuildable lot, again, for residential purposes. It does meet our minimum zoning requirements, but will require a waiver, again, for no soil sites being outside 1,000 feet from a fire hydrant. The area has been, the entire lot's basically been designated as a drainage easement, again, for the drainage from the quarry. We've looked this over. The comments that we had have been addressed, this plat's in good order, so we'd recommend approval subject to that waiver request.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Doug, does this track become part of the track across the street?
It'll be a standalone, it'll be a standalone track.
Standalone track?
Right. It doesn't cross, property lines won't reach across the road to get it. It just becomes its own separate track at that point, just under the same ownership.
So I guess somebody has to own it forever then, so I mean...
Right. It'll be part of the Blue Water Quarry. I mean, he's going to sell it to Blue Water. It just, it's not going to be the same tax mapping parcel as the quarry itself. It's going to have its own tax map parcel number. It'll just be under the quarry ownership for the purposes of drainage.
So essentially, this is like a big detention pond?
Basically. Yes, sir.
And is there, how is maintenance on that guaranteed without...
Well, that'll be something, you know, if we get complaints about it, ultimately that'll be the concern or the responsibility of the quarry, the Blue Water. I believe the water's already going there.
Right. It's right across the street from one of their settling bays here, and where they're carving off the parcel is right in this little area here, right across from Adams Road. And, let's see. So it drains across here and into, I think, what is that? This Bushman Creek here. So it's already draining across it. It's just been a source of contention, complaints, whatever, from the property owner about the Blue Water Quarry draining across there. So essentially, as part of their agreement, they'll said, we'll buy that parcel from you, and we'll maintain it and take care of it.
So the drainage is already in place?
Yes, yes. They're not changing any drainage or anything like that. This settling pond drains across here, there's a culvert under here, and it just drains across and gets into Bushman Creek, and then on its way.
Chair, I'll make a...
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to any staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 20-2079, Blue Water Quarry. Other comments? Call or roll, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B7, 20-2080, Ruth Estates. Three lots on 6.46 acres, zoned RM, located along Leanna Road. There are various applicants. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The final plat for this subdivision was originally approved at the Planning Commission's August 26, 2019, meeting. This plat has been subsequently recorded since that meeting. They are, the applicants are proposing to shift some lot lines from lots, on lots 3 through 5, and also provide a cross-access easement for all three lots for a common driveway. There's no additional lots being constructed here, just shifting of some lot lines, but since it affects more than two lots, that has to come before use since it affects the third lot. So with that, our comments have been addressed. This plat's in good order. We'd recommend approval of this. So we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 20-2080, Ruth Estates. Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 6B8, item 20-2081, Buchanan Estates, Section 8, Phase 2. Forty-five lots on 22.45 acres, zoned RM, located off Epps Mill Road. Jones Construction is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this subdivision was approved by the Planning Commission back in April of 2018. This plat does appear to be consistent with that preliminary approval. We did have several comments on this plat. Appears that most of those comments have been addressed. Just maybe a couple of housekeeping items that still need to be verified, but other than that, nothing that should hold up approval from our standpoint. Mike, did you have any comments on this one?
Well, the public utility easement, is that one of them?
Yes, that's one of them. There's still waiting for response from Middle Tennessee Electric regarding whether these lots were required to have a 20-foot electric and public utility easement along the fronts, consistent with what Section 7 had. So we're still waiting verification of that, but we'll make sure that's verified before plat recording. So we're comfortable moving it forward.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve 20-2081, Buchanan Estates, Section 8, Phase 2. Other questions? Call or roll, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 6B9, 20-2082, South Haven, Section 9. Forty-eight lots on 10.47 acres, zoned PUD, located off Ocala Road. South Haven Development is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this subdivision section we're looking at was originally approved at the Planning Commission back in September of 2015. This plat appears to be consistent with the preliminary approval. Most of our comments have been addressed. If Mike has anything outstanding, I'll let him discuss. But there is one item that I still have some concern about, and at the, Mike, if you could zoom into the end of that cul-de-sac where that little common area lot is, you know. At the end of the cul-de-sac here, and Mike's kind of showing it right in there, you've got Lot 350 and Lot 349. You kind of see right there, kind of between the two, you see just a real small cutout area for a common area to connect with the walking trails for public access. I'm not quite sure, the whole area itself is only about 45 square feet, as you can see, which would be under common area maintenance. I think, I wasn't sure if that really was the best approach on that. I thought maybe just an easement through there would have been a better approach. Being that the lot was just so small, it almost seemed more trouble than it was worth to create an extra lot, especially if it's going to have to have a lot number and all that. I mean, I don't guess I'll lose sleep over it one way or the other, but that was a concern that I had on this, considering that the minimum lot size in the subdivisions, about, what, six thousand square feet, somewhere in that area, and then to create just a small lot just for that purpose. I thought an easement might be a better option for that. But other than that, those are the main concerns that we had on that. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Most of our other comments have been addressed.
Doug, with a motion to approve, including making that common area a part of a lot, be acceptable to you?
It'd be acceptable to me. Now, whether, I mean, the applicant may want to speak more toward that, the engineer, but as far as I'm concerned, that would work.
So this being an individual lot, now, does the tax office have to set up a separate tax account for this, and somebody has to pay a $1 property tax on this?
It would be, it would have to have its own tax map parcel number, and would be a lot.
So it's going to cost the county $50 to collect a dollar in taxes, basically?
Something like that, yes, sir.
We can certainly do it as an easement, but what we were planning on doing was just including it in the, I guess, Section 14 plat, where we plat off the remaining open space, which is going to be the gas line, the area across the gas line from this, and probably 30 acres total.
Well, if that's the case, could you just not have the back property line there? Just make it part of the remaining area, and then just dedicate that easement through that part of it?
Yeah, we can take the back off.
That would work fine, too. Yeah, just do a little notch. That'd be fine.
We'll take the back property line off, for clarity.
That's fine.
You good?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve, with that being changed to an easement, and staff comments?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve 20-2082, South Haven, Section 9, with staff comments.
I think we might need to get a clarification here, Mr. Chair. I think what I was understanding the engineer to say is this part would be incorporated into the next phase, a future phase, and not as an easement?
Well, basically, what they'll do is they'll just kind of, and Mike, I probably show a lot better than I could, just take off that little back line right there, and it just, it'll just show up as remaining property.
It'll just be a little.
A little notch.
Notch. It won't be a box. It'll just be a notch out right there.
So it won't be an easement, then? I think so that the motion is that it's going to be an easement.
Okay.
It'd be my suggestion that the motion be revised to indicate that that section be omitted from the plat, this particular plat.
Yeah. That would work.
Good catch, Jim. David, I believe you made the motion?
Yes, that'll work without the easement being part of the plat.
Very good. So we have a motion without it being an easement. Is that right, David? And then, subject to all staff comments?
That's correct.
And the note would be that this lot would be incorporated in the next phase or the next section? Okay. Everybody understand that? Anything else, Doug?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve 20-2082, with staff comments. Call or roll, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B10, item number is 20-2083, South Haven, Section 11. Forty lots on 62.71 acres, zoned PUD, located off Ocala Road. South Haven Development Group is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Again, the preliminary plan for this subdivision was originally approved similar to the last plat we just considered, same subdivision, back in September of 2015. This plat also does seem consistent to be, to be consistent with the approved preliminary plan. Our comments have been addressed. There is an issue on here with some of these lots similar to what we discussed with Cascade Falls regarding lot envelopes and critical lots. So I think what they've done on here is the same thing they did with the Cascade Falls.
It is similar, the, some of the lots. 1314. 30, okay, 30789. These are actually showing up as drainage easements, so you're not going to be building in there anyway. I think they're, I think they're okay on this particular plat. We had some changes from the approved construction drawings to the final plat stage. These lots got a little bit larger, and they included that as part of the drainage easement. But as long as you're not building there, we're good.
That's recommendation to approve?
Yes, sir.
Question, just a second. You saying 307, 308, and 309 are not buildable?
No, no, no. The back of the lot, the back of the lots. I'm sorry.
I was fixing to say, if they're not buildable, there's no showing them as lots.
No sense platinum. Yes, sir. No. Originally, if I pulled up the approved construction plans, the back of the property lines were essentially at this drainage easement line or thereabouts, close to it. So this was a modification between construction plans to the final plat, and, but as long as it's an area that won't be disturbed, you won't be putting a shed or anything in there, I'm okay with that.
It stated on this that no sheds are, nothing can be built in that drainage easement, correct?
Yes.
Approval upon all staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve 20-2083, South Haven, Section 11. Other comments or questions? Call or roll, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B11, 20-2084, Old Salem Estates. Three lots on 5.23 acres, zoned RM, located along Old Salem Road. Alcorn Properties is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant proposes to divide this property into three separate tracks. There's an existing house on the property that will become part of Lot 3. All tracks have road frontage. Lots 2 and 3, however, will share a common drive, as you can see on the plat, either on your iPads or on the screen. The county's GIS does show a cemetery on the property, the Smith Cemetery. The applicant's design engineer was made aware of this, and you can see that it is now located on the plat with an access easement. There has to be perpetual easement access for it, maintained, again, in perpetuity for that, and they are showing that on the plat now. Our comments appear to have been addressed, and so we're in, we're comfortable with the request at this point.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 20-2085, Davenport Station, Section 3, Phase 2. Other questions?
That's Old Salem Estates.
I'm sorry. That's too much for me to look at here, you guys. We have a motion and a second to approve Old Salem Estates, 20-2084. Did I get it right that time?
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments? Call or roll, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gail. Item 6B12, 20-2085, Davenport Station, Section 3, Phase 2. Forty-four lots on 11.53 acres, zoned PUD, located off Shelbyville Pike. BMCH Tennessee is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this section was approved by the Planning Commission back in August of 2017. This plat does appear consistent with that approval. Most of our comments have been addressed. Just looking at this, Mike, there were a couple of things. I don't know if you had any comments on, but while Mike's looking at that, again, we talked a little earlier about the traffic signal and everything. I don't think there's any need to go through that part of it, but Mike may have a comment or two on this. I'll let him address.
Craig, this is the subdivision section that will have the final plat, I mean, the traffic signal at Rucker and 231. One of the things we noticed on here, which we don't have a large issue with, but this used to be three lots, I believe, four lots. They had actually squeezed four lots in here and decided it was too small of building envelopes to make it work, so they just scaled it back to have two lots in here, which is fine with us. I didn't have an issue with that. And I think the only thing was the ties to the adjacent subdivisions or sections. Where is 107? 107, where we've got a side lot line, we're supposed to have 15 feet between.
Buildings.
Buildings. And I think it wasn't clear on 107, which is hiding from me. Oh, okay. 107 is on the adjacent subdivision. Okay. We just need to make sure that we have 15 feet between the proposed house on 169 and then the house on 107 to make sure there's 15 feet between them. I think that was just a minor thing that we need clarified. But other than that, I believe we're in good order.
Good. Other questions?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to those staff comments.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 20-2085, Davenport Station, Section 3, Phase 2. Call or roll, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones. David Jones. Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B13, 20-2086, Davenport Station, Section 4. Twenty-nine lots on 11.59 acres, zoned RM, with a previously approved planned development. This is a CUP located off Shelbyville Pike. BMCH Tennessee is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you stated, the preliminary plan, or I guess at the time was a preliminary plat for this section, was approved by the Planning Commission back in September of 2007. This particular section of Davenport Station was part of the originally approved planned development, which is why you see on here the lots are fairly a significant amount larger than the lots you see in the newer sections. But again, that was a product of the older planned development that was approved prior to our new regulations taking effect. This section does require a waiver, wait a minute. Okay. The biggest issue we're running into at this point is there is a couple of areas outside of the lots that they are proposing here, remaining areas of less than five acres. So what we're running into on this situation is making sure, first of all, that there is access to these, that we can. is access to these, that we can have a landlocked parcel. Now, that track there will require a access easement to it, which they are showing, but it is less than five acres, so that would require a waiver. The other area, which is on the kind of the flip side of that, will have its own road frontage. Since these lots are less than five acres, they should have lot numbers as well. Now, I know that that might be problematic from the standpoint of just numbering, but that can be worked around, I think. But anything that's going to be less than five acres is going to have to be platted as a lot. So with that, the other comments have been addressed. The plat actually is in good order, except for those couple of items. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are they far enough south where we can connect with the next?
They'll just be future sections is what's going to happen. Yeah, this is actually on the northern end of the development, this particular part of it. So, yeah, when, when they come back as new lots, you know, future sections, I mean, that issue will go away. It's, it's just timing more than anything.
So what, what Doug's saying, Section 4 is going to be situated right in this area here, but you've got some remaining land here that'll have frontage back here that, that'll be a remaining parcel, less than five acres. And then I think you also have less than five acres back here, but that one doesn't have frontage.
Right.
Are there plans for those partials?
There are. It's all part of the overall master plan. Again, there will be lots there at some point. It's just, right now, it's more of a timing issue is what we're looking at.
Approval with staff comments would cover your concerns?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second to approve 20-2086, Davenport Station, Section 4. Other questions? Call or roll.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 6B14, item number is 20-2087, Valley Farms, Section 2, 32 lots on 6.52 acres, zoned PUD, located off Cliffside Drive. Valley Farms Group is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this section was approved by the Planning Commission back in September of 2017. Again, this is consistent with that approval. Our, most of our comments have been addressed. Really, the only outstanding comment we have at this point is they just need to make sure they show fire hydrant locations prior to plat recording. That's something we'll verify whenever the plat is brought in with the Mylar for our signature, but other than that, this plat does appear to be in good order.
Thank you, Doug.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Thank you, Jim. We have a motion and a second to approve 20-2087, Valley Farms, Section 2. Questions or comments? Call or roll.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of 6B, which is final plats. If my math serves me right, we've just approved over 290 final lot plats. Item 6C, these are items submitted for site plan approval, 6C1. Item number is 20-3039, North Boulevard, Church of Christ, Burnt Knob Road Campus. New construction of approximately 24,000 square feet of community assembly space. This is a religious facility on 18.41 acres, zoned institutional, located along Burnt Knob Road, North Boulevard, Church of Christ is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. This property was rezoned institutional back in 2018 for the proposed use. Burnt Knob Road is within the city limits of Murfreesboro in this area, so traffic improvements and access what they're proposing in this set of plans will need to be coordinated through the City of Murfreesboro's planning and engineering and traffic offices. We did have several comments, actually quite a few, on this, not so much because it was a, a bad set of plans, it's just there was a whole lot of sheets involved with it, probably one of the biggest sets we've seen in quite a while, very thorough set of plans. We've gone through two different reviews of this. The plans have been changed to, to meet the comments we had. Our comments have been addressed. This is a good set of plans and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Doug.
Mike, let's talk about the drainage a little bit on this. Have you reviewed that? I'm, I'm trying to find that detention pond on, on this.
Yeah, and I will say while Mike's looking for that, the, the plan set on this was so large, I had to break it into two different files in order to get to fit on the SharePoint, so I apologize for, that might be a little clunky to, to work with, but again, just the sheer size of the, of the set just made it difficult to do.
Here's the proposal building. And that was part of some of the issues we had early on. When we get to my great, my GIS maps, I'll show you what we're talking about. So this area, like many areas in Rutherford County, the drains do a bowl, among other bowls. So the property is situated right here on Burnt Knob Road, what Doug mentioned, the city's annex, this section, Burnt Knob Road, between the veterans and then past Black Road here. The property is situated right in here, and I'll show you. Comments?
I guess my concern is there have been issues of high water in various places surrounding this area and the, what was at one time proposed to be a park there, and I think that they were going to build a big drainage lake or something. I don't know where we stand on those plans, but I don't want this property with all these hard services to compound the problem for the neighbors.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, Mike, is your microphone on?
Sorry, it is now. Sorry about that. So I've turned on the 2010 aerial imagery from the May 2010 flood, and you can see a couple of pockets of water where it stands here. This is a large sinkhole in this area here that, as you can see, is not as deep as, well, it's, it's got water in it, but down at the bottom. So this is an area that fills up, drains out, and goes to different sinkholes. They build up, spill over, build up, spill over, and Matt Taylor's here, he can explain it better than I can, but what they've done, you've got a big bowl that part of this church is situated in. So to offset all the new impervious area, the new parking building and all that, they're building their bowl, half of the bowl, a little bit larger, so the water surface elevation stays the same. They're not increasing the water surface elevation with all this new runoff going in this drainage area. So we have evaluated their plans and feel comfortable that they have met our requirements. Let me see, if I can get back to the plans. One of the issues we had early on, they needed such a large area that they were excavating straight up to the property line. And we thought, well, one, you're going to kill the existing fence row trees, and two, you're going to make it hard to do your landscaping buffer around there on a three-to-one slope inside that. So, but they have modified the plans, pulled the proposed grade work away from the existing fence row trees around here, and this is their, their bowl area, their, their half of the bowl, where they've increased it quite tremendously. And I believe there is a cut and fill, so there, in the very bottom, you can kind of see an area. I asked them to evaluate how much material they're taking out, how much material they're, they're bringing on site, and a cut and fill kind of balance. So they're excavating 12,000 cubic yards more than what they're placing on site. So net, they're increasing the, the bowl size, another way to put it. But yes, we have looked at the drainage. I could go on and on, but, and I know you probably want to get to lunch pretty soon, but the, the area that we were talking about, it builds up, spills over, builds up, spills over, and we looked at the route, leaving the site and making sure it's not going to impact any homes in the area. And we've also, if I don't have it pulled up, but the city has, and we as well as the county, have looked into dye traces. Where's this water going? And this, I think there's a, there's one in the area, but I'll let, go ahead and let Matt speak on this as well, but.
Do you, does, do you have a laser pointer? Will it show up, up there?
I don't believe we do.
You go back to the, the 2010 map, Mike.
Yes.
So.
A little bit.
Mike did a good job.
Property here.
Yes. Mike did a good job describing how we approached it. I, I just wanted to point out a couple of things, is that really, this area right here is probably the area that concerned us the most, because as you can see, the standing water was closer to existing homes than, I mean, there's, there's no structure back here. Matter of fact, I'm not even sure that even the 2010, that it built up and started overtopping from this feature. This feature appears to, I'll use the term, drink water pretty well, whereas these are more closed contours. If there's a throat there, it's, it's hidden and probably has to soak into the ground, whereas this is more of a physical feature that takes on water much better. And so what we've done is applied for a UIC or an underground injection control permit through TDEC so that we can maintain and allow that water to continue going there. What we did was we took the volume that was accounted for in these two basins that are on the western side of the property, and then we added it over here and then added some to that to account for our extra impervious. And so the end result here will result in these houses on the west of our property being safer at the end of the day after our development. And so we have taken it where these are no longer trapped. It'll have good gravity flow to the, to the northeast. And, and then exactly like Mike said, we're not letting that build up and overtopping more frequently than it does today as well about everything that we've excavated. So I think we've got a good, solid strategy. We can't discharge to a stream, but this is, I, I think this is the best alternative whenever you've got that situation. It's very.
Here's, here's what Matt's talking about. He's, they're excavating a channel to drain that adjacent property where the water did build up in the 2010 flood and drains it through the site to the big new stormwater management area. So they are addressing our concerns on that. But, let me see.
Thank you, Matt.
There is a relatively new, well, there is a dye trace, I should say, close by for And forgive me for not having this up already, but. All right, I'm almost there. Okay, there's veterans. Okay, here's the church property, and right at the corner is a dye trace where the water went in and shows up, I think, at Military Springs. This is a major karst feature where a lot, you could see a lot of these, these lines are dye traces. The water doesn't travel in a straight line underwater, but they, they could say, okay, we put, we put dye in here and we know it came out here. So it's traveling in that general direction. So knowing that that, there's a karst window feature here, and I feel pretty strongly if we did a dye test here in this sinkhole, that it would also come out at Military Springs. So like I said, they're, they're increasing their bowl, their side of the bowl, to make sure that the water surface doesn't increase any, anymore on their side or the adjacent But all, all in all said, it's a good set of plans, and we feel confident in it. They are putting turn lanes in, but that will have to go through the city because that's in their city right away.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second to approve Item 20-3039, North Boulevard, Church of Christ, Burnt Knob Road Campus. Call or roll, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gail. Item 6C2, 20-3040, site plan for Epps Mill Gas Station. New construction of approximately 5,350 square feet of general retail space. This is a gas station in a convenience market on approximately 1.7 acres, zoned EAC, which is Employee Activity Center, I believe, located along Epps Mill Road. Kalpana Patel is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant's proposing to construct a gas station, convenience market on this property. There's also an additional retail space proposed. However, at this point, no specific user has been identified. It would just be whatever is allowed within the zoning ordinance. Depending on that user, additional parking may be required. That's just something we'll just have to kind of look at as it, as it comes. Only a portion of this property, as you can see on the plan, is proposed for development at this time. They're going to reserve the remaining area, which they're calling Lot 2. Of course, if they want to actually create that as a separate lot, they will have to do a subdivision plat. The applicant has been made aware of that. The Rutherford County Highway Department is making road improvements in this area for the, the Tan Oak School, the elementary school that Mike kind of talked about just a little earlier today. So, you know, we'll make sure that the plans incorporate any right-of-way acquisition or not that have been done for this particular property. One big thing about this to keep in mind is it is going to be accessed with city sewer through the City of Murfreesboro. It will have to be approved by Murfreesboro Planning Commission because of that and to meet Murfreesboro city standards as well. That would include landscaping. They are showing a pretty substantial landscaped area. We would just need to make sure that those materials and quantities meet the, the city's requirements, as most of those would be more than what the county would require anyway. No buffering really necessary for this. The surrounding area is pretty much all zoned EAC, so there'd be no buffering, would all just be perimeter and parking lot area landscaping. But with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Jim? Any intention or word about Lot 2 becoming large vehicles to service, tractor-trailers or anything like that?
Not on, on this particular one. When you look at the plan. When you look at the plan, it's, it's pretty much just private passenger vehicles what you're looking at. There's no, there may be a diesel pump on one of these, but there's no provisions made for any large tractor-trailer.
I was thinking on Lot 2.
On Lot 2, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Nothing that they've made us aware of, no.
There's no connectivity shown between what they're showing on this plan with Lot 2. There's no, you know, driveway stubs or anything like that.
There won't be storing any tractor-trailers over in the vacant lot, though. Nothing, nothing like that.
The only reason I mentioned it looked like that access road is splitting both sides of that property line. That's the reason why.
Right. I, I think there'll be cross-access between the two eneasement, but again, not, at this point, nothing that we've been made aware of, so.
This kind of alludes to what Doug was referencing. The Miller Road changes, the, the highway department has kind of smoothed out these two 90-degree turns a little bit smoother. This is the old right-of-way section here. They've acquired new right-of-way on this side and kind of smoothed it out, but this, the road location is actually what's out there now, so.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Allen. I have a question for Mike.
Yes, Rhonda.
Um, Mike, Epps Mill, that's a very busy road, and I know traffic stacks up there a lot. From a safety standpoint, wouldn't it be better if we had two access points on Miller Road and eliminate the one on Epps Mill?
Um.
And then it would require Lot 2 to also utilize those same openings?
Well, I think that's kind of what they're, I guess they would share the access that Doug pointed out, that, that it straddles both, both sides.
No, what I'm saying is you eliminate access to Epps Mill from that entry point there. You've got the, right now, they've got an entrance and exit on Epps, they've got an entrance and exit on Millers. My thought is, is that you could have two on Millers and eliminate that one on Epps altogether, because that's a very short distance from the interstate to that, there's going to be a lot of in-and-out activity right there. I'm just thinking, wouldn't it be safer if everybody came in and out at Miller? And then that way, if at some point you had to add a traffic light, you could just add it at Miller.
Actually, let me, let me get to my maps. What the state is proposing, and let me, let my maps catch up. That, you know, having an access on Epps Mill might be something that the design engineer and client want to discuss, part of functionality of the gas station. But what the state has proposed, if I can get everything turned off and on that I need. So the property is, well, shoot, back on again. Okay. The property is located right here. Well, for some reason, it won't let me turn my contours off. Try that one more time. Think I got them that time. Okay. So yes, it is in close proximity to the interchange, but the state has evaluated this interchange and they have made recommendations. I don't know when the recommend, the recommended improvements will happen, but what they are proposing is to reconfigure this exit ramp here to bring it closer to this ramp, this other ramp here. And then these ramps will be configured a little bit differently as well, but what they're planning is to signalize each of these ramps here and here, and then they'll also extend the, the ramps, off-ramps on the, and on-ramps for the interstate. So that's what they're proposing, putting two new traffic signals here. I don't know if that's, that's pretty close proximity to Miller, if, for this new traffic signal coming in, so I don't know if that's too close to install one here. But typically, as a functionality of a gas station, you, you want access convenience, and Matt Taylor with SEC is here, he might expound on that a little bit more.
Yes, sir.
Next one we're looking at, where is it going to be located?
The, the new gas station will be in this area here. Oh, oh, that's over by, just north of Highway 99 off, off, near Rockville High School and Clear Ridge subdivision.
So as far as access here, I would say that the additional access point on Epps Mill with this project would actually help the functionality of Miller Road, because if you force everybody to turn into Miller Road, you're forcing everybody to stack up and, and make that left into Miller, whereas right now, they can go past that intersection and come to our intersection. And so you'd really be pushing more traffic closer to the interstate, more turning movements, I should say, closer to the interstate interchange access point if you eliminated this access. This access is important for this parcel, for truck movements. In addition, it's going to be more important for Lot 2 whenever we decide who that is, because Lot 2 does not have direct access to the Dollar General entrance that you see on the left side of the sheet. There is a flag between there that is owned by other parties and not my client, so it's going to be more important for that future user to have, to have that particular access. We are about 200 feet, I think. That lot is about 200 foot wide from the intersectional Miller, which I think meets TDOT's clearance as well as the county's clearance requirements on the corners. So I actually think this will be better than eliminating the access point.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Matt. Other questions?
All in all, the plans are in good order. We do need a little tweaking done with the detention pond. We typically want to see a one foot of freeboard above the 50-year storm event, so I'll have to rake the young design engineer over the coals a little bit to get some more freeboard on that, but there is room to expand the pond at either end, so I'm, I'm not too concerned to make the pond a little bit larger so we have more of a freeboard for that larger
You okay?
Yes, sir. Like I said, we're good to work with the, the design team. They, they usually.
Make motion, prove. I have a motion and a second to approve. That includes staff comments. That includes staff comments? Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve 20-3040, Epps Mill Gas Station. Any other questions? Call the roll, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6C320-3042, this is a site plan for Clear Ridge Gas Station. New construction of approximately 3,240 square feet of general retail space. This is a gas station and a convenience market on approximately 2.24 acres zoned CS. This is Commercial Services located along Highway 99. Christina Patel is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant is proposing to construct a gas station convenience market similar to what the one we just looked at on Epps Mill Road, except this one's not proposing any kind of an additional retail space. You can see that it's going to be accessing existing points, both the Highway 99 and then the Clear Ridge Drive. Both of those access points are already in existence. There'll be cross-access to allow this particular site to utilize those as well. So no new access points beyond what is already there. There is a development directly across the street, which is in the city limits of Murfreesboro.
Carlton.
Carlton, yes, Carlton Landing, thank you. That, part of that project is to install some turn lanes along Highway 99. Our office has been in contact with TDOT regarding the, this particular development as well as the Dollar General, which is located right next door to the subject property, about how the striping of that may work. Mike, if you've got additional comments on that, I'll, I'll let you address. But beyond that concern, most of our comments, it looks like most of our comments have pretty much been addressed on this, so with that, I'll let Mike discuss the, the TDOT issues.
So the city of Murfreesboro has annexed, and forgive me, it takes a second to catch up, the right-of-way along Highway 99 to incorporate the Carlton Landing, which is directly across the street from the proposed location. So this kind of color-hatched area is city of Murfreesboro, and this is where the Carlton Landing will be constructed. The proposed Clear Ridge Gas Station is here. This is the existing Dollar General here, and you can kind of see what Doug was talking about. They're going to access, utilize this existing concrete driveways to Salem Highway and then also to Clear Ridge Drive here. You can see the standing water here. I went back and looked at the original design plans for Clear Ridge and Dollar General and the other developments in the area, the Fogel greenhouse here. So this is just an area that is difficult to drain. It just, water comes in here and sits. There is a culvert under Highway 99, New Salem Highway here, but it has, the water has to build up, then get out. Carlton Landing has incorporated the drainage that comes from this, the east side of Highway 99 and, you know, routes it around their proposed development. They're, they're having a, you know, lots on either side of the road. There's a big stormwater management area here, but they have incorporated it, so. And then I asked the design engineer to show the proposed improvements for Highway 99. You kind of see them on the edge of, the left edge of the page. Here's the Gladstone Drive. That's the new road for Carlton Landing here. But part of the improvements, they'll, they will be installing right turn lanes, but also left turn lanes into Clear Ridge Drive and then also Gladstone Drive. So they're making a lot of needed improvements along this road, and they are, they're incorporating those with TDOT's review. One thing that we did talk to TDOT about was the striping for the proposed turn lanes on, on Highway 99. This is a, an existing driveway that, that we mentioned earlier for the Dollar General, but this gas station will show it. So we've asked them to say, is there anything that we can do to enhance or improve this area? And they are looking into it. So right now, they're proposing a striped island, and which, which is going to be an improvement, but we're trying to see, is there any way we can modify the striping to extend the turn lane back a little bit more for the Dollar General? So, and TDOT is reviewing that, and that's, that is in the city of Murfreesboro's limits, so that has to be coordinated with what the city is allowing for Carlton Landing as well. So we've just asked them to look at that as well. Like I said, a striped island is better than no refuse at all for people wanting to make left turn movements into Dollar General. Otherwise, you know, you still have the opportunity to come down to Clear Ridge Drive and then come in through the back here to the Dollar General as well off, off that road. So we are looking at, at access for that as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That's just a striped landing. The city of Murfreesboro and the Planning Commission will not be the ones that'll take the heat on that. The county commissioner out there will take the heat on that. I've been taking the heat on that for a number of years, that there is no turning lane into that, that subway and that Dollar General. And we've been on this very floor fighting this for a number of years. In fact, the original drawings for the Dollar General out there and that whole complex, there was the possibility of a turn lane. And it wasn't put in at the time because of the state. They said they would do it the next time they did some road improvements. There was a bond that was set at that time to take care of a turn lane there. But the property owner come back in later years and brought it up, and the bond was removed. And I mean, it doesn't go by a month or two that it doesn't come up on Facebook. Why isn't there a turn lane in that area out there? Now, I'm very glad to see there's a turn lane for Clearview, because they do need it. They're, they're stuck right there with the, you've got the school traffic that's coming through there. The traffic does back up way down the road, and with this Carlton development, Carlton Landing across the road, you're looking at over 100 houses in there to come out right there. And then you've got Clearview, and then you've got Rockville Elementary, you've got Rockville Middle School, and you've got Rockville High School. That's using this same roadway right here. And then you come down, go down the road, and Murfreesboro has now allowed the development of some more homes to be built back that way. There is no way just striped landing is going to work there. There's going to be cars backed up all the way back up here to this courthouse if you're, by the time all of that development happens right there, when somebody wants to stop off and get them a loaf of bread at, at Dollar General. So I think strong effort's going to have to be made when, for that to even open right there, and well as everything else. Striped landing is just not the answer. There's got to be a turn lane in there, and for them to come out and just say, we're going to look at it? No, I, I don't think so.
Well, that, yes, sir. And that's, that's kind of part of my problem, because the city of Murfreesboro has annexed that right-of-way. I don't have any control over that, that, but I, that's why I asked them to show the improvements for Carlton Landing and, and what's going on there. And I did, like I said, I did talk to TDOT about that, and they, they are going to reevaluate that. But I, like you said, I don't have any final word on it.
Mike got another question on that somewhat to further on Mr. Reed. If I go to Dollar General and get my loaf of bread and quarter milk and get me a Subway sandwich, can I go to the gas station and get my gas without getting back out on 99?
Yes, sir. They are connected.
I didn't see that exactly.
They have a shared driveway.
Okay. Well, it would be a tremendously dangerous situation if you had to go out of the gas station to get back into Dollar General.
Right. So they are, the, the different hatch pattern, this is the new concrete area for, for the proposed gas station. They are going to be tying into the existing concrete driveway for the Dollar General and the strip malls, the little shops here as well. There is going to be a little drive-through on the end of the proposed gas station for sandwich shop or, or something like that, too, if you're hungry for a sandwich.
And I believe there's a cross-access easement that was already recorded as part of the original plat on that, allowing that cross-access, so I think we're in good shape there.
Yes, sir.
Now, I saw you move up. Do you have any comments? You'd rather not?
Always relish the opportunity.
Always relish the opportunity. We, who did you talk to at TDOT, Mike?
Stanley Sumner.
Stan Summersner. I'm happy to reach out to Stanley and see what the options are. We're the design engineer for across the street as well, Mr. Reed. And so we're, we're happy to reach out and see what options he can go, do over there, and then work between Mike and the city and my client and Carlton Landing client to get, to get something a little better there. So I, I don't know what all we can do with TDOT, but I'm happy to accommodate or have that conversation and be the intermediary there. So my, my client here is very willing to try to participate in a solution.
I just think it's going to be, the secret in all of this out there, when you bring that much traffic that we already have there, and combine it with what's going to happen across the road, as well as future, we're already talking about Rockville High School out there adding portables next year. We just opened that thing last year.
Right.
And we're already talking about portables in that high school that we've got out there now. We have a middle school. We just, we just put eight portables in there. So it's not going to decrease whatsoever. You know, I can understand what you're trying to do right here and all of that, but I have a real problem of just seeing a striped landing for people out there to, to deal with that. Because if you'll go back, and I think if the state goes back and checks their accident records right in there, they're going to see some major problems.
I remember a lot of conversations about that during the original zoning for the Dollar General. I think that was back whenever we were still doing conditional use permits, I believe. And so, and I think that we, there were some studies done. I don't know that, maybe TDOT went out there and did some studies to decide if a turn lane was warranted. These traffic improvements that we're showing on here, we did a study for the Carlton Landing project and to come up with these. And a matter of fact, I think one of the recommendations from that study was at maybe like 75% buildout or 90% buildout of Carlton Landing to come back and do a signal warrant analysis for this intersection. Today, the signal was not warranted, but they felt like that there was a high likelihood with the projected traffic growth on 99, plus those homes added in, that a signal would be warranted here before the end of, end of the development. So that's also, I think, an important part of the conversation, that we're going to start to drive a lot more people to this intersection. And with these left-turn lanes, gives them a, a much better option to turn into the back of this gas station or Dollar General with, with the improvements that Carlton Landing is doing. It might be possible that the turn lane that's being constructed for Carlton Landing could be expanded back some toward, toward town, I think.
I most definitely think that's what you're going to have to do, is expand that thing back there, because it's just not going to go to be that narrow-neck situation you're going to have there. Whoever did that study and did that, they don't live there. I just have to say that they don't live there and experienced that. And I, I'm coming to you from experience.
Yes, sir.
And what I see and what, what we have there. Subway, that's my office. That's where I meet people, and that's where I eat quite often. So I know what, I sit there and watch, watch the tires squeal and carry on out there the whole time.
Yes, sir.
And that's without the development and what we have, and a gas station, too. So I'm just thinking about the future. And I just think, I think that, as we say out of that way, you're going to lick that calf again.
Yes, sir. I've never licked a calf, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to try to help the situation. I think my client is to, I think that's about a, if we could get about another 150-foot of storage in there, that would encapsulate the subway entrance. And so maybe we can work that into the existing TDOT permit between Carlton Landing and here, and just get all that work done at one time. What I'd hate to do is have Carlton Landing do all that work, and then my, my client turn around and reduce a lot of that work. So I'm happy to accommodate that and be the intermediary between all parties there, so.
I'm going to have to wholeheartedly agree with Pettis on that. The trip from Eagleville to, to, to west Murfreesboro is normally 20 minutes or so, and at certain times of the day, it's over an hour. It's really, really difficult, and it's becoming more and more dangerous. There's a state representative out there that I believe does not live too far from there. And our former state representative out there used to live just less than a quarter of a mile from right there. They should be fully aware, and hopefully they can pull some strings or put a little pressure on TDOT to make whatever approvals they have to make on this and expedite matters. So I'm wondering if it is appropriate for, and our engineer to contact our state representative on behalf of the planning commission and say that, you know, we also have a major concern with this, and we think we need some help with it. Is that, is that an appropriate ask?
I'm happy to do whatever this commission asks of me. And a phone call is certainly easier than a lot of things I could ask to do, so that's not a problem.
But I have a great deal of confidence in you, and especially working with all of the different partners here. You're probably the, the perfect person to fit that into the, into the mix there, so that everybody's talking from the same page.
Okay. We can certainly do that.
I wholeheartedly agree with Pettis and, and Jim. Turning lanes ought to be on everything. You go out 231 my way, it's like, it's like, it's like NASCAR. It's like Talladega. You, you just got to get over and make you a turning lane. And it's, and, and if a state builds a road in, they don't even put a turning lane, Mr. Lee. We need turning lanes. That needs to be, need to have a work session. Turning lanes, if you build a house, maybe build a turning lane. I don't know. I, I agree with them wholeheartedly. I think we've got three turning lane votes right here, so.
Certainly do that. If somebody's got the best contact information for our state representative in there, I'd appreciate getting that. So I don't particularly live out there, and so I don't particularly call him a lot.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Chip. I'll echo Pettis and Craig and Jim on, on that. I live in Eagleville, and I understand Jim, what he's saying, and coming to Murfreesboro, depending on time of day, you just, you try to avoid it coming up through there. I hate to delay anything, but it's just another situation that would be in our best interest to get some more information on this more concrete before we make a decision on this.
If you're okay with it, I would just assume you make the condition of approval that we install it, extend the turn lane back rather than delaying it. It's a permit exercise, and it's just, to me, it's a question of, can I get it permitted inside the existing permit with my clients across the street, or if I have to do a, a new permit? I don't think it's that TDOT's going to come back and say, you're not allowed to put any more pavement on our right-of-way, because I've never had them tell me that. It's always, how much can, how much can you do? And so I, I would prefer the motion. I think my client is wanting to move his project forward, and so I'd prefer to do that. And I'm happy to come back and give you an update, if that's what it is, or through Mike. But I feel certain that we can get that permit. It's just a matter of how quickly we can turn it around, so.
Good part is, in the proximity of that entrance to the gas station, you've got full width there. So I think it's just a matter of a couple of hundred feet at most of extension. So I think, I think it can move forward pretty easy with that.
That's what I'm, I scaled off, using my fancy scale here, about 100 to 120 feet. So we're happy to accommodate that.
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, not exactly sure how.
Is that a proper motion to, to do that, to make this conditional on the fact that that turn lane gets extended back in order to meet the concerns that the majority of seem to have?
Let me see if I can reword that. Motion to approve contingent upon state approving the enhanced turning lane.
Turn lane extension, yeah, I think that's fine.
Was that what you said, Chip? Pretty much?
Yes, I was just making sure that is a, that would be a proper motion to, to ask that, to just move that back and meet the requirements. Commissioner Reed, you good with that?
I'm good with that. And before it's built, though, we better make sure there's a turn lane there.
Very good. Anybody else have any questions on the motion? We have a motion and a second to approve 20-3042 Clear Ridge Gas Station, and this includes the state approving enhanced turning lanes. Everybody good? Call or roll, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch, David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Vogel.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This brings us to the conclusion of the meat of our agenda today. And under Other Business and Reports, a couple of things I'd like to bounce off of this commission. And none of this is carved in concrete, okay? So October appears to be the busiest month that this commission will have had in years. We've got four rezoning requests that are scheduled to be heard on October 12th. One is in Shelbyville Pike. That's a commercial development. It's kind of normal and should not require tremendous amount of decision-making. Another one is the Burgess Property, and there's a proposed, I believe it's a senior living development out there.
55 in Oakdale, sir.
Somewhere around 1,100 units. And this will probably create a lot of discussion, especially from the neighborhood in that area. A third is Sulfur Springs Road, and that's an industrial park that's on the residential side of the interstate. And that will also create, could create a lot of input from the residents of that area. And the fourth is the Nashville Motorplex Racetrack, as being called. And I'm willing to wager that we've all received numerous telephone calls on that, and we know that that's going to require a lot of time. It's the suggestion of your chair that we split this up and not try to conduct all of those in one night, which I'm not sure that we would be able to get through in one night. So my proposal is for us to, on our regular Monday, October 12th meeting, tackle the Shelbyville Park, commercial development, the Burgess Property rezoning, and the Sulfur Springs Road rezoning, industrial park. And then we split and do the Nashville Motorplex Raceway on a separate night, and that night would be two nights later on Wednesday, October 14th. And I'm looking for your input in, in doing that. It would require two meetings and a three-day period of time. And I don't know about you, but I've been to some of those, we've been through some of those marathon meetings, right, Craig, that's lasted hours and hours and hours. And at least three of these has the potential to do that. So it's my suggestion that we split that up and cover it over a two-night period of stand, two nights versus one night. And I would appreciate your input before we put that to bed.
Mr. Chairman, this is Chip. Doug, at this point in time, do we know if the governor's order is just going to be pushed forward another month as far as the open meetings and being virtual or not? And how does that impact the ability for us to handle that inside the courthouse, continuing to do social distancing and things of that nature? Do we know anything of that, or have you thought about that?
We know a little bit about it, and I think Doug's got some additional information.
I do.
But if, even with splitting them up, it may cause issues with everyone trying to register in on Zoom and get in on Zoom. I don't think that everyone would be able to do that. Other than that, I think there will be a lot of interest in people showing up to support the communities. So Doug, do you have?
Well, just to kind of follow up with that, and Nick and I have had conversations on this. So Nick, obviously, if I'm saying something wrong, please feel free to chime in. But the governor's order, as we understand it, allows the virtual meetings through the end of October. With, there's a, when October comes around, there's a few extra things we have to do as far as legal notices and things of concern. Nothing that you would need to worry about. That's something we would do on our end. But we are advertising those meetings as virtual. Now, when we first got wind of all these projects coming in, we have had people that have called and have mistakenly thought that, how the, where how this got out there, who knows? But there was some, there was some information going around that said that we could only handle 10 calls, and the first 10 calls, if you got in, you did, and if you didn't, you didn't. I didn't think that was the case at all. I verified with our Cable 19 folks that that was not the case, that, you know, they can pretty much handle the load that they're going to get. Now, it's going to be, I mean, it's going to be a long meeting, regardless of which way you do it, if you have people here, or if everybody just calls in. But the people I've been talking to, because as Jeff had said, you probably all have gotten at least one phone call about this. We've been getting pretty much emails, phone calls every day since the neighborhood meeting they had a couple of months back. So we've been telling them since the application was made, that, you know, at this point, you know, we're still going forward with the virtual meetings, as far as that's concerned. So that's how we are advertising it. That's how we are moving forward with this, is that they will be virtual meetings. And, you know, of course, a special meeting has to be specifically advertised as such. We've already taken care of that for the 14th meeting. There was some concern on the 14th that the Board of Zoning Appeals meets in here at 4:30 before our meeting, which would be at 6 o'clock. It doesn't look like the cases going before the Board of Zoning Appeals are going to take very long, so there shouldn't be any kind of an overlap or anything like that. We should be fine there. So, but right now, Chip, I hope that answered your question. But as of right now, we are still moving forward with the, the virtual meetings through October.
I think dividing them up is a great idea, and thank you for thinking of that. And we welcome.
Charlotte, is your mic on?
It says on.
Okay.
Um, splitting the meetings is a good idea. Thank you for thinking of that. And we welcome the community's input and want to encourage them to express their views. But since, just due to the volume, it is limited, and we need to express the limit to, is it three, four minutes?
Three minutes.
Senator, it's three.
Um, is there a way to just have a timer? Not a rude, not, not to be rude and not to be, not have an alarm, but just so they are aware of how long they're speaking?
I don't know if, if this will help, but some of my conversations with residents in, in one of the specific areas encouraged them to organize to the point where they could appoint one, two, three, four, or five different people to speak on the community's behalf. I don't know that they will do that, but that was a suggestion from me to them. And I, I think they've taken it to heart, and I know that some of them are doing that, and maybe even in more than one of, of these rezonings that's coming up. and maybe even in more than one of these rezonings that's coming up. So hopefully, some of those individuals that will want to get up and speak will make themselves, make us know that they're supportive of whatever position they're taking without getting up and speaking. And this is one reason that I'm saying that the presence versus the Zoom meeting might be a lot larger than we've had in a long, long time. So we've encouraged them to do that. Whether that happens or not, I don't know. But as, as your appointed chairman, I will see that we maintain a certain decorum as it relates to time limits.
Craig, microphone.
I got it. Any other input? Is there anyone who opposes us having two different meetings in that same week? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and make the announcement that we'll have two meetings on the week of October 12th. The first one on Monday, October the 12th, will cover the Sulfur Springs Road Industrial Park, the Burgess Property Senior Living Development, and the Shelbyville Park Commercial Development. And the one on Wednesday, October 14th, 6:00 PM, will be the Nashville Motorplex Racetrack. Okay? Doug, you have anything?
No, sir.
Please, don't have anything.
I'm not even going to joke about it. Nope, I have nothing.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have anything? Today's agenda was lengthy and probably the most, one of the most lengthy 9:00 AM meetings that we've had in years, several years. And I won't, I won't tell you to get used to it, but maybe you ought to get used to it, because our job is going to be more and more complex as time goes by over the next few years. Once again, thank you for your time, your attendance, as well as your participation. We are adjourned.